SFUSD will provide interpretation throughout today's board meeting. Sorry, this is the wrong slide. One second. SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot streamtext dot net forward slash player question mark event equal sign SFUSD dashboard. Attendees who wish to provide public comment to the board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda that they would like to comment on. The attendee will have to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee's panelist and enable the attendee's video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce the P number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas tardes. El Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Sin necesidad de interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres uno nueve, tres ocho dos, nueve seis siete seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave. Seis seis cinco, nueve nueve seis, nueve siete seis, seguido de la tecla número. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please.
Guaigajang manxang hao. Odei jang hui wei guman ke liang hao kui hui li le tihong ah chen yip fum hou ge. Ye gong niya xiu yu gong dong wa fang yi de hua le hoi yi da yin gong mo sami nei de dian hua hou ma. Dian hua hou ma hai yat sei bai sei bai un sei sam sam yi ba. Zepeng ji hao hoi si yu ma ma che yi yat lu ling jiao bai jiao un zeng zi. Ngai, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our translation services.
I now reconvene the special workshop meeting at 6:31. We have already done translation services. The report out from closed session. In the matter of student TN versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024-03-01-60, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student Herrera Posey versus SFUSD case number 323-C dash CV dash zero two six two six dash JSC, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In two matters of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives direction to the general counsel. At this time, oh, previously, before we went into closed session, I did mention that accessibility information, translation services, and virtual meeting information can be found on our website. Childcare information is that we are providing childcare for regular board meetings and monitoring meetings on the first floor in the enrollment center at 555 Franklin from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, or the close of the meeting, whichever comes first. Childcare is for families who will be attending the regular and monitoring board meetings. Space is limited and will be provided on a first-come, first-served basis for children ages three to 10. And if you have questions, please contact the Board Education Office at 415-241-6427 or Board Office at sfusd.edu. So at this point, I will move to public comment. Are there any, I don't have my public comment notes in front of me, but are there, have we received cards? Okay. So one minute each per speaker, please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Secret all come lineup, John Jerson, Supriya Ray, and Jeff Lucas, one minute each.
Hi, I'm John Jerson. The report tonight has me more worried for my kids than I would hope to be. This goal on math proficiency, by the board's own selection of its goals, there's nothing more important than this. And yet, the plan that you oversee and the execution of that plan that you oversee ended up in failure. And at the same time, somehow you were so comfortable with that plan and so comfortable with the execution that at one point you chose to debate a calendar for an hour and a half instead of continue to discuss this issue. I don't understand how that happened. I don't understand how we can continue to let that happen. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Supriya Ray. I'm here for a couple of reasons. First, I want to encourage you to continue to hold these monitoring workshops. I know it's integral to the work that you're doing. And even when we get bad news, it's really important that we do this, that we recognize what the problems are in our district. So I would hope that you're not discouraged, even though the news is discouraging. I see that we're significantly off track. That is immensely troubling. And I see that in most of the specific grade levels and groups that were measured, we have actually gone down as opposed to making progress. I'm immensely troubled by that. I'm worried by the fact that the district still seems to be relying so heavily on computerized solutions to this issue. I think after distance learning, we know that this is problematic for most students. There is a place for computerized assistance, but I think it's critical that we bring in actual people and do high dosage tutoring to help our students catch up because those are among the interventions shown to be the most effective, as are encouraging our teachers to have higher expectations for students. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Lucas, and I agree with the previous commenters. This report said we didn't meet our interim goals, but there's no explanation or analysis as to why. What happened? What causes to not meet our goals? And so I appreciate that, how superintendent is busy, you know, fixing everything everywhere all at once, but we need to center on our goals and take control of the district as we move towards our goals. A bad report is just a bad report. Really, what's more important is what is our response to that bad report? We face adversity. How do we respond to it? How do we rise from this? How do we learn from this to improve student outcomes and achieve our math goals? Thank you.
And before we move to virtual comment, I did want to make mention, this is the second monitoring meeting where we've done public comment upfront. This is the first time we have noticed the monitoring agenda item as an action item, and this is aligned with the Council of Great City Schools training that we are committed to going through. And so what you will see today is we will have a conversation about the monitoring report among the board members, and at the end, there will be action taken by the board to accept, not accept, or to continue the conversation if the board so chooses after having the monitoring conversation. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we move to the table, but I did want to let folks know that that is why we are taking public comment upfront and will continue to do so as part of our, as part of our ongoing monitor, monitoring. And with that said, I will ask if there's any virtual comment participants.
We do have one hand up.
One minute, thank you.
So Erin, you will have one minute to speak. Go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening. This is the one and only Parents Republic Schools of San Francisco. I am going to be asking the same question I have been asking at previous community conversations, town halls, and previous Board of Education workshop meetings. If we are going to be funding schools and providing support through, based on math state testing scores, then the schools where children are struggling, either from a disability, maybe they're not getting support at home, whatever the case may be, how are we going to support them moving forward, especially since we know are cutting staff, support staff at schools who would be the direct person to help those students improve their achievement? And instead, that school's going to close, the child will feel at fault, and what are we going to do to help those children still be passionate about learning?
Thank you. Thank you. That does conclude a virtual public comment.
Okay, at this time, we will move to the table and have the board conversation. And then, I think, yeah, well, yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Yes, 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 yep, yep.
All right, okay, so at this time, we will begin our conversation on, feels echoey. Hold on just one minute. Yeah, the workshop on student outcomes, item E. And for everyone, as a reminder, item F has the questions and answers regarding agenda items that were submitted by commissioners and answered by staff in advance of this meeting. And as I mentioned earlier, attached or will be having a conversation, and at the end of the conversation, we'll be answering, the board will be answering the following questions. The questions are, does reality match the vision of the goal? Is there growth toward the vision? And is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth towards the vision? And if you look at the attachment, effective goal monitoring, both the board and staff and anyone participating or viewing this meeting can see the overall structure of these monitoring sessions. And after goal monitoring, the goal monitoring conversation, you'll see these questions laid out and the parameters by which the board is suggested to consider their acceptance, choice not to accept, or to keep the conversation going. And it has examples of current performance questions. So really, as a reminder, the reason why we do these monitoring sessions are because the board nearly two years ago, or a little under two years ago, did adopt three goals around third grade literacy, eighth grade math, and career and college readiness. Our last monitoring session on this goal number two math was on January 23rd. We had subsequent discussion on February 13th as we, when we made a decision to include algebra in eighth grade and also around piloting of algebra going forward and curriculum going forward. So at this time, this is an ongoing process that we do in partnership with the superintendent and his progress around the goals. The board sets the goals, the superintendent sets the interim goals to keep us on track there, and directs and works with staff to ensure that we are, or to work towards hitting those marks as we go along. And so it is in that spirit that we'll be having those conversations. So this is really meant to be a strategic conversation. Also attached is an effective question answering or asking document that the board has as well as the public has. And so the goal is to keep the focus on the goals, and that is also how the superintendent is evaluated. And so this is part of our ongoing progress monitoring and commitment as a board to continue the progress monitoring and to monitor each goal at least three times a year and the guardrails at least four years. So with that, would you like to say anything, Superintendent, or is there anything the Vice President would like to add?
No, thank you for the introduction and the context. And yeah, so tonight, we'll be sharing our data around our interim goal and talk about some of the strategies we have in place, are putting in place to improve the outcomes. And, you know, these progress monitoring reports, the, you know, is an opportunity to see what progress we're making or what progress we're not making. And so appreciate that this is a space where we can, you know, we're just, we're being public about where we are. And so if you see our progress, we're not where we need to be, right? So the goal, the broad goal is eighth grade math. And then you see we have some of our interim goals, we show the progress here. And what we're comparing here is the fall benchmark assessment to the winter benchmark assessment. And the outcomes have gone down in each of the areas. And if I go to the next slide, you could see we're noting we're significantly off track because on this slide, what's in the blue triangle is where we needed to be to be on track in March. And then you see the line of where our actual performance is. And you see in two of the lines also that they've gone down. Now, first of all, just to help provide some context for the assessments, we adopted new assessments this year in part so we could do progress monitoring like this and have consistent assessments. And what happens with the assessments is the spring assessment become, it actually assesses more standards, and so students need to do, achieve a higher score to, to show improvement. And so we're seeing that as more standards are introduced, that actually fewer students are achieving at the level that we want. And so that's very concerning to, to see and recognize that we're significantly off track. If we're doing this monitoring session in April, is this still April? April 30th. And so we, you know, have a little bit more than a month left at school. And when we did our last monitoring report on literacy, we were off track, and we got the question of, do we think we're going to be able to meet the goal? And at that point, I was still cautiously optimistic in that we could see progress for two reasons. One is it was done earlier in the year, and two, and more importantly, like there are specific strategies that we're doing this year that, that saw, you know, we're starting to see some, some potential results that we're thinking we could accelerate by the end of the year. What we're going to be presenting tonight is a strategy that we've used where we are seeing results for that strategy, but I think there are two issues. And one is that that's a supplemental strategy, and then when you look at the overall results, we need to do more than just be providing supplemental support to improve. And secondly, you're going to see that it's a strategy while it's helped the students who have taken it, who, where we've had them use it, we still need it to have done more of having students use that strategy. But what I will say is, when we talk about what our long-term strategies are, still think we're moving in the right direction for that, and you'll hear some, some of the work that we have planned to try to accelerate the growth for, for next year, but want to recognize again why we're noting significantly off track because, you know, we have not seen the growth that we need to see, or the indication that that growth is going to come with another, you know, five weeks, six weeks of school left. So with that, let us, let's look at the, where we did see a difference is something we were intentional about, and we shared at the last, we shared at the last progress monitoring report, a school that had, had success with this program. And as more and more students started to use it, we did see success, and then we'll share some of our longer-term plans. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Prentice, and welcome to the team. Thank you for being here, so I know the team that's going to share.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. As noted by our superintendent, we are focusing on our supplemental, and one of our strategies was a supplemental strategy using DreamBox. After our last meeting in January and after feedback from the TNTP audit, we knew that our students needed more experience with the major work of the grade, and that was a gap for our students in, that they were experiencing. So we worked with our supplemental, one of our supplemental providers, DreamBox, and we targeted professional development on the major work of the grade and how they could use this particular tool to give students more daily experience with the major work of the grade. In that same vein, when professional development, we also wanted to do more around setting student goals, about being targeted, about the type of work they were doing while they were in DreamBox, making sure they were assigned work that gave them practice around the standards. And what you'll see in this particular graph is, in terms of our DreamBox users, there was an improvement in their scale score versus students who are not DreamBox users at this point, did not show that same amount of growth. So I want to say now that we are committed, knowing that this is a strategy that shows some improvement for our students, that we are committed to requiring some of this in our classrooms, in our school settings, and making it more accessible and creating more opportunities so we can see more achievement across the board. And that, I'll turn it over to Han.
Thank you. This year, we also made DreamBox accessible, right, to all middle schools this time. And so with that, we communicated, in August, we communicated with all middle school leaders that DreamBox is a support strategy for math and to use that. We wanted to, in messaging, we wanted to also show that there are entry points in different spaces in middle schools, from advisory classrooms to after school. And what we also found out that, given that there is a way for students to access DreamBox at home through their clever account, after the student-led conferences, what I was able to do was send out to families a letter that connected their student-led conferences to their Star Map data to share that wherever you're at in terms of math, to, to increase the fluency and practice, here's a way to do that through DreamBox. And we also gave instructions for families to do that and look at it with their, their child. We partnered with CNI on professional development for math teachers and leveraged that on the third Wednesdays of every month. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Devin.
Thank you, good evening. As was just shared regarding DreamBox and highlighting DreamBox as a supplemental support, we've been concurrently working on accelerating the progress towards changing our Tier One curriculum. As we shared at the January progress monitoring report within the results of the audit, we know that the curriculum that we currently have in place does not adequately meet the demands of the standards, in addition, does not adequately provide educators with the guidance they need to support diverse student populations. And so with that in mind, in January, we actually began the process of convening a district-wide math leadership team comprised of representatives from multilingual, from special education, from lead, from research planning and assessment, from curriculum and instruction. And we used a standards-aligned tool to evaluate core curriculum that met expectations on ed reports. From that point, we selected three elementary programs and three middle grades programs to move forward to a larger review body of site-based educators. That review body of 93 SFUSD educators and 27 community members began That review body of 93 SFUSD educators and 27 community members began the process of evaluating curriculum, those three elementary and three middle. In March, they will conclude that evaluation in May, at which point we will determine two elementary and two middle grades programs to pilot. While that evaluation has been going forward, we've also begun the process of recruiting pilot educators to pilot that curriculum in the 2425 school year. And one of the things I just want to highlight is that we have been heavily engaged in recruitment around piloting because our goal is to get as many pilot teachers as possible, specifically at the middle grades level, given the results of the audit, in order to remove the curriculum honestly as quickly as possible. So as we're recruiting pilot educators, the window is still open. So we are still recruiting, but currently just to highlight at the middle grades level through a really strong partnership and collaboration with middle school lead, we have pilot teachers at 10 of the 13 middle schools. And also to highlight, we want to make sure that this is coherently done with the piloting of Algebra I. And so educators will be piloting curriculum in Math Six, Math Seven, Math Eight, and in Algebra One. As I said, we're still recruiting. That recruitment period will close in about a week, at which point we will finalize the pilot teachers, order instructional materials with professional development for pilot educators beginning in summer 2024. And so one of the things we know is that while it is imperative to have high-quality instructional materials and curriculum, that work and those resources must happen in concert and are codependent with high-quality professional learning. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Hernandez to share more about the aligned professional learning work.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Hernandez and I'm the executive director of professional learning and coaching in the curriculum instruction office and really excited to launch some of the professional learning and supporting the middle schools. Lesson study was really going to be seen as a key professional development model for middle school teachers that really values and empowers teachers and builds their competency. And so all middle school teachers are going to benefit with the site-based coaching. So some of this, two of the schools are going to be fully immersed in the lesson study as a full implementation. And then other schools, they're going to have site-based coaches that are coming and support their teachers. And then we're going to have a new teacher model. It's all going to be grounded in lesson study, but it'll be at varying degrees, really grounded in inquiry, the inquiry process, really as classroom research and really looking at, as they're piloting the materials, like what is really good teaching and learning look like? And so it's a real support model. It really builds teacher efficacy and it's a great retention strategy.
And so again, oh, actually we have.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And so one of our, one of our, Willie Brown is joining our lesson study. So we have four elementary grant schools and Willie Brown wrote a grant from the Student Success Fund, and so they're all in. And Willie Brown, this was a quote, a quote from their principal, Malia, and she said, "Willie Brown, we're trying to write a new math story. One is built on innovation, exceeding standards, and a deeper understanding of math that will drive math proficiency for high school readiness. Having engaged in this model of professional learning in the past, we strongly believe in the efficacy of lesson study. We have seen outcomes at the K5 level and we believe outcomes can be replicated at the middle school level."
And so thank you, Dr. Hernandez and Ms. Krugman and Ms. Fung and Dr. Priestley. But, and we wanted to end with a bright spot, recognizing that, again, you know, the progress monitoring for this year, we're off track towards our goal, but you can hear how much more is being put in place for next year from having actual standards-aligned curriculum that our teachers can use to having a clear professional development approach that has resources behind it, to, you know, different levels of support and schools really being in the, the vanguard of the work, to also continuing with a supplemental program that we see has had success, but now it will really be supplemental to this intentional improvement work rather than being the key strategy to achieve results. And so with that, we'll turn it over to the board to discuss this monitoring report.
Okay, there we go. Thank you so much for the presentation and for the, the framing, the honest framing of what's happening. I do have a little bit of a pivot and I think this was reflected in the question and answer document. I did notice that there's a pretty significant variance in instructional minutes and also bell schedules across our middle schools. Some schools have 40-minute to 55-minute periods, five times a day. Other schools have 75-minute periods, some days 55, other days. Some schools have three days of instruction of, you know, as examples, 40 minutes one day, 83 on a couple other days, which is a pretty long period. So I wanted to understand what the strat, the strategy is around the variance of instructional minutes and bell schedule and how that is reflective of collaboration, accountability, and monitoring around student progress and supporting our educators and their satisfaction with how the school days are structured and they're being supported.
Yeah. And both saw the questions, but appreciate the framing of the question right now in that, because it, because I think part of the answer, it highlights where we're intentional about our strategy and where maybe we haven't been as intentional or not intentional, but it hasn't been part of the strategy that maybe needs to shift. Where we've been intentional is in, you know, this has been now several years, you know, a decade in the making of, you know, shifting to Initiate Wonder Model, which the purpose of the model was to give additional time for students to be able to participate in electives as well as time in the day for students to participate in like intervention and additional support without, without having to miss electives, right? And so in that sense, you see schools that where there's the, where schools have it several days a week, rather than the five days a week, they adopted a block schedule and then had seven periods within that block schedule for the week. That was very intentional. What I don't, Han could speak to this more, but what we haven't been as intentional in is saying, here's like how the bell schedule needs to work. And so this did come out when we were doing our review for our last progress monitoring. Even within all those schools that are doing the seven period a day, there was, you know, a meaningful variation of the number of instructional minutes. And that's where we haven't set as a district yet. And that's what I mean about was part of our strategy to say, you know, everybody needs certain minimum number of minutes or everybody needs to meet the state number, state required minutes. So we have made this shift to say, everybody needs at least 205 because that's what we saw schools were doing at, that did the Initiate Wonder Model. But I think you're posing the question through your question here, and you might speak to it more, is like, is that really going to be enough for us to be able to meet our goals? That's where then we need to shift our thinking and really ask ourselves that question. Do we want to be strategic and maybe more centralized or directive and saying, here's what expected minutes are for math across, across the board? And how, then how do we make that model work? We still want kids to have access to classes, but these are our goals. Like this is where we're, we're focused. So I don't know if you actually need to add more, but that was, that, that's, wanted to acknowledge where we weren't, we weren't intentional in terms of standardizing it yet.
In addition, this is actually the, the right time. We are reviewing all bell schedules right now and we just created design principles. And this came out of the advisory mastermind work, which I shared in that we, we've made it very clear that 205 minutes has to be, show up in the best bell schedule. We were also looking for consistency because we knew, just also serving on the student transfer panel, thinking about how when students move from school to school, we want to create a common experience. So there are certain design principles that my team and I started looking at today because as we're reviewing and getting calibrated on the bell schedule. So yes, we are looking at it and we are meeting with our principals. Everyone knows 205 minutes needs to be there. We had said, you know, 60 minutes of advisory across for, for the week as well, because before we saw variances. So we are addressing that.
So now it's, yeah, okay. Commissioner Sanchez does have a follow-up, but I'm going to hop in really quick and just understand there, I'm hearing a commitment to 200. Recommends between 200 and 50. And so I'd like to better understand why we are, we have settled at 205.
I just want to kind of maybe double down on that question because if you look at our data, the schools that have more than 205 minutes are all in the green and yellow. And every school except for one that has below 232 minutes, there's only two in the yellow. So I just do wonder why we would settle on 205. And knowing now what Ms., or President Motamadis has said, why are we settling for such a low number of minutes?
So again, I think, I mean, we're, we're at, for some, we're actually increasing the minutes, but for that, I think is to be able to do, to get, tell me if I have this correctly, to be able to get to the 240, we would need to think about how those other periods are adjusted. And that's, you know, that's kind of been an extensive shift to the, to the schedule. So for example, like even if there was, let's say, you know, there were, you know, we limited the number of elective minutes, right, or adjusted that, that's part of teacher's schedule. So we'd really just have to work, work that through. And so wanted to see what it led to standardizing the minutes there and then see, okay, how do we might make a schedule that gets it to the higher level of minutes? Now, I'll defer, and I think this is something for us to take back and can report on before the end of the year, is there a possibility to be more creative between, you know, because now master schedules get set and in terms of staffing as well, is there an opportunity to look at, at that as we go into 2425 because we are significantly off track?
Commissioner Sanchez, that's a great question. When we look at the, the graphs there, you see that the four schools that are in like the top graph that you're, the four schools that are in the green, yellow and green are the schools.
Can I just interject for people who might, this is in the Q and A document that we're referring to. I'm not sure what page number, oh, page eight of the Q and A document, just so folks can understand. Great.
So those four schools are schools that are not in the Initiate Wonder Model where they won't have access, right? Or students who are English language learners, students who need intervention, students who have IEPs will not have, will have extra access to electives. The schools, if you look at the schools in yellow, blue, so I'll just name the schools, Francisco, Roosevelt and Presidio are all operating at instructional minutes of two, I think, 200 and, 206 to 180. So it's the, what I'm saying is those four, the four schools, what you're saying is in the green and yellow, but you have all those, also three schools that are at 206 and 180. That's why we had decided on the 205. And here's the other thing, we're going to pilot the 205 and revisit, not pilot, but every single school will be at 205 consistently next year.
By the way, the, the blue is even higher, right?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. If you're showing the.
Yes.
Wait, so we'll, clarifying question. Will schools that currently have 200 or above 205 will now go down to 205?
No.
No. Unless they are in the Initiate Wonder Model, which allows, because you have to increase, right, decrease minutes to allow for the electives. If you're not in the Initiate Wonder Model, then it will, your minutes will stay the same. So the schools that are not in the Initiate Wonder Model next year are AP Genne and E as well as Hoover.
Okay.
Wait, is Marina Initiate Wonder?
Okay. And I'm also noticing that this doesn't include our K8s. And doing a deep dive, they are also at a significant range both around advisory as well as instructional minutes.
Yeah. And you know, something I think I actually would be helpful to have as well, and I'm even going to say, I think we have this data before the end of the year because, well, remind me, we, in our last progress monitoring report, and when we talked about the implementing algebra, we have additional support time for kids for math, correct? So, and one of the extra periods can be for math. So what I think would be good to know is how many students are we enrolling in that? And that we're definitely going to monitor to see is like that, and is that additional period effective or not?
Okay. So one follow-up question I have is around the model of the bell schedules and the instructional minutes time. How do school sites give feedback back about how that's functioning? What is the monitoring schedule? And, and who, who is accountable for instructional minutes, especially since, you know, I'm just going to highlight again, Department of Education, 250 to 300 minutes of core subjects. And I know we're focused on math. This, this could, this is also our English Language Arts and our other core subject areas that we are now. I'd like to better understand this move towards a seven-period day, especially seeing what the impacts or a correlation on the impacts to student outcomes for all of our students. And if there is a better way to serve all of our students as well as those who need interventions throughout the day. But I'd like to understand how, what the mechanism is for collaboration, accountability and monitoring as to the affect of our student outcomes and our educators' feedback about their support. Because teaching for 83 minutes to twice a week is very different than teaching 45 minutes, five days a week. Oh, no, it's a question.
Okay.
I'd like to understand how that, how that decision-making, I mean, we have a huge, you know, this has been going on for several years. So what has been the feedback loop to get, to understand as we, and we can see the variances. So what has been, what's the planning and who, who's accountable? Because this is more than just like earlier superintendent, you mentioned like, you know, the coherency and centralizing, if that, if we're centralizing, how are we centralizing so it's responsive to what our educators need and student outcomes and that there's an iterative process?
Yeah. And maybe this is where I think what will be different for next year at least is some of the coaching support. And I think this is where the, it gives us an opportunity to provide support and learn what's happening during that time. But in terms of what, what support has there been for the, as we moved several years ago to this block period approach?
Right. So prior, there was support in terms of professional development for project-based learning as well as block schedule. So our, our schools shifted in 2019, like it was the first pilot for block scheduling. Although there were schools prior that had block scheduling in place, the first pilot was Roosevelt and Francisco. And so, and then as you know, 2020, we went into the pandemic. We offered again, project, we also offered, what was it, professional development again, but after the pandemic, we did see that there was just, there's more of an appetite now for professional development in the summer and then ongoing. That, that's the support. In terms of like how we align the instructional minutes and review the instructional minutes, it's connected to the CDE around like every single school, I'm going to have to pull up the number, every single middle school has to have a total of, I need to see, I think it's 57,000 minutes, but I will get that to you, that number to you. And we go through, they have to turn in their bell schedules to us. We have to, we work with, yeah, we have to review that bell schedule to make sure that they are aligned with those minutes. And so that's the checking that we do. What we're doing also this year is to make sure that what we, to make sure that lunch is consistent, we need to make sure that, you know, we have, lunch is consistent, that the block schedule is consistent. There are some schools that do variations where there are lightning days. So we're looking at all that just so that there's more consistency.
Okay, thank you. I had a question. I think just to start, I think just seeing kind of the, the lack of progress we made is concerning. And I think just really concerned about the impact it's going to have on students and families and how we're going to kind of make up for the time that's lost for the students who are so far behind that we haven't been able to support. The question that I had, and I have maybe some like related follow-up questions, but if you could talk a little bit more specifically superintendent about what percentage of growth in terms of kind of the interim goals that we had for this year, do you expect on a year-to-year basis of. of the kind of projected strategies that we have kind of included here? I don't really see anything in regard to that. And also kind of getting the idea of the timeframe we expect to- And so that's, I think, like the first part of the question, I guess if I could-
I'd have to go back, look, I think in our previous monitoring report, one of them, we laid out what the five-year trajectory would look like. But we're going to need to adjust it now because if we don't meet the, the goal for this year.
Okay, so I think then to clarify, then the expectation is that the strategies equate to an equal gain of kind of what is ultimately our goal for the particular area. Like though you've calculated that those strategies will help us to, will be the reason we're able to reach our goals for kind of the things that we've set out.
Yeah, so the ones, that's why I said, the ones we're, we're putting in place for next year, yes, are meant to help us meet the goals. The ones we did for this year, we haven't seen the growth that we needed to, to see.
Okay, and then I guess then to follow up on that, are we sure that these strategies are the most impactful? And they're doing the most to help us reach the goals that we have? And do we have data? I guess that confirms that. Because I think looking at the data sets, I see the benefit of the software tools and the additions that we have. But I actually don't see a comparison to them versus other options or alternatives or other kind of historically known best practices. And I just, I'm curious how much, you know, are there other options? Are there budgetary constraints that make this the only option? Because I think that kind of transparency would be really helpful in understanding how we're viewing our strategy and approaches being impactful.
Yeah, so if Dr. Priestley or others want to talk about why DreamBox, and then I could share a bit about the adoption and the lesson study.
So I think a little bit about the why of DreamBox versus maybe some other tools. One of the things that, one, I just want to say, we always looking for a research-based program, right? And what can yield us the highest results in terms of student achievement. That's always at our core. One of the things we also recognize that, knowing that we're going to move into an adoption over the next year, hopefully next year with math, we want to also have a resource that plays well tandemly with that. We want something focused on standards. We want our resources to make sure they can have goals around our student needs as we previously mentioned. We want our teachers to have input on how our students navigate those tools. It allows teachers to intervene where needed, to give additional support. And we've also seen when, I think very clearly targeted for our students who may have been traditionally underserved, that we see have results there. And so I think there's some relationship that we want to continue to build on that we see and that I think that we can anticipate, while I couldn't give you an exact number, that I think we can anticipate seeing some continued growth in that space.
Well, that's for the DreamBox. And so, no, I think, you know, for the lesson study, we actually shared that in our last progress monitoring as a bright spot. And so have worked to spread, to expand that through the innovation grant. And so we've seen the evidence that's had in improving outcomes at MURS and the schools in the pilot. And then with the curriculum adoption, remember we shared at our last meeting, the audit that we did around math instruction and saw the need for having more content-based instruction at the appropriate grade level. So that's the rationale behind those two, you know, systemic strategies.
But then I guess just to confirm it, but there's not a numerical goal or an expectation. Every site that we've seen DreamBox to, we're going to see this much of an increase. Every site that implements this change in lesson plan is going to see an increase in this much. We don't have any numbers based off that. We're just kind of reforming our practices to best practices to get better results and to help us reach our goals. But there's not like a numerical kind of number connected to each of these strategies that relates to a percentage gain that we would have, right?
Well, two things. One, every school, we did this this year, and we're going to reflect on how this went and we'll check with, and then see if we need to, how to revise it for next year. Every school did get the goals for their schools of what to improve in terms of related to all the interim goals, right? So even if, like they're at their school level, they already met what the district-wide average was, we still set some targets. To your second point, though, you are correct, right? There, and if you find that this, I haven't found this in education. If you find it that, if you say, if you do X, you will get Y results and we can guarantee it and that's going to be the case, like that would be great. But that, like, like, you know, lesson study is a best practice, but there's a lot of factors, you know, that go into implementing it that we're going to, we're going to do. But I don't think, you know, I can't say if we implement it, even if we implement it fidelity, that's a guarantee that scores will go up by, you know, 2.7%.
So just one thing, I guess then how can you say with confidence that we'll reach our goals if we implement these strategies?
Because these strategies have in other places led to improvement of, of student outcomes.
Okay, I have actually, it's another take on Commissioner Bogus's question, because I think I had a similar question. Page two of the report talks about significant change. And in the context of it, notes that the high-dose tutoring and the DreamBox or these supplemental changes, you know, if scaled, would be helpful. And I'm understanding though that, you know, the supplemental options if scaled is not a significant change. But instead, those plus curriculum adoption and professional development would constitute significant change. Is that, so that's my first question, is that accurate? That is the quote significant change? I don't mean trying to be obnoxious with the quote. I just want to make sure that the significant change refers to scaling up of those two supplemental, the two supplements, and then curriculum adoption and professional development? Okay, so then I guess related, similar to Commissioner Bogus's question, did we, did we know that we would need more than the supplements going into this? Because I think all of us knew that the curriculum adoption wasn't going to happen this year. But yet we have these interims that would suggest that we would have gotten there. I don't think that you as, as a fearless leader would have chosen interims if we didn't think that we had a shot. So why did we think that the supplements could get us there when clearly they're not? And we need much more to be significant? And, and based on that, what are we going to do different moving forwards? So that we're not here in a few months saying, oh, that didn't, that wasn't significant enough, we need more?
I think my reflection as we've gone through this process, I mean, there's other, you know, we, we have like our guardrail around improving instruction that we've been working on this year with the core rubric, right? And I think, like I said, the, a lot of what we're talking about are some, you know, systemic changes that are going to take time. And then there's goals that we have to meet over the next, you know, several months. And even, even next year will be by January, we have, you know, need to do the progress monitoring. And I think, you know, seeing that like, how do we, you know, how do we make progress while bringing these systemic changes? And also, how, when bringing these systemic changes, do we make progress in the specific areas where we have goals? And that's where like, you know, I was saying, for the each and every by name that we've talked about for the literacy and kindergarten, to me, it sees as a path forward because it's intentionally targeting students while also working on the systemic change. And we didn't do that in math to that level. We just were working on kind of improving instruction in general and then the supplemental, supplemental support. That's kind of the reflection, yeah, it wasn't enough. In hindsight, it's easy to see, it wasn't enough that was there.
I mean, I guess, I appreciate the hindsight, it wasn't enough. I think we all know that now at this point, right? Because hindsight is, but, but I guess I want to push a little bit more on like, looking back, how and why do we know it wasn't enough? Because I want to make sure that as we're making new, as we're, as we're moving, as we're saying, this is the significant change needed, that we have more confidence that it will be enough. I think none of us want to be back here for another progress monitoring, none of us, right? Us, everybody here, sort of doing this again. And so I guess that it's one thing to say, yes, it wasn't enough. But what are the lessons learned? How can we look back and say like intentionally, this, this, this is our growth area now. This is what we missed, and this is what we need to do different as we're coming up with these new plans.
Yeah, well, again, I think our, our A lesson learned is needing to have intentional professional support in place and the curriculum in place as well. They're like, without those foundational pieces to centrally work around, you know, then to individual, how we might be able to bring up, improve instruction and improve student outcomes.
Hello, okay, it's working now. Yeah, yeah, so maybe following up on some of my colleagues' questions, just, you know, because I think, again, the question I think we're trying to answer is, is there a plan that's sufficient to meet the goal? Because it's clear we're not yet and we're not making the progress we need to make. So it's that third question that President Mutamadis said, which is, is there a plan? And I think, I appreciate my colleagues' questions. And I guess for me, so in one piece, which Commissioner Westmore just referred to as kind of this interim, like what do we do in the interim before we get the curriculum adoption? Because we have a pilot year and not even adoption year, so that's a long time. So it seems like there ought to be a planned acceleration of intervention. And what I see right now is the online platform. And it's not clear to me, it seems like there's some data here that suggests that it's working, but it's not clear to me that it's having an impact. And I guess I don't understand that either. It seems like there's a disconnect between this claim that it's working and then seeing that it's not happening. So I guess one curiosity is around that. But around the more systemic question, clearly the curriculum adoption's important. Clearly the professional development's important. And we know a song will be a good curriculum, we know lesson study is a good strategy. What I don't see though is, and help me understand this, is what's the plan for actually getting this to scale, right? And I heard, with lesson study, I heard two schools out of our 13 middle schools plus K eights are doing it next year. So that feels like we're waiting a whole other year to do deep, meaningful professional development. On the curriculum adoption, I hear that we're, it always felt like we were trying to market the pilot to our teachers to try to convince them to do it. And again, which implies that it's sort of optional and that we're going to wait a whole other year. So I guess that's where I'm just not, maybe I'm missing something, but I'm not seeing the, I'm seeing the, I guess what I want to say is, I'm seeing the elements of good strategy, but I'm not seeing is the, is the systems change strategy. How do we, what's, what is our plan to get these to scale in a timeline that actually works for our goal and our students?
Yeah, and I think since we're talking about the whole, like that, I understand what you're saying rather than speak to just the individual pieces of the whole system. I'm going to ask Dr. Aguilera Fort, our Associate Superintendent of Educational Services, to, to share where that's, that's going to go.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you. So let's start with two key pieces right now. Let me respond about the lesson study. Two schools will be part of the research process that implies lesson study, like full-on lesson study. The rest of the schools, the rest of the middle schools will receive coaching with some of the practices of lesson study and using content, two different levels of content. One is the one that will be provided for the providers of the curriculum that we are piloting. Two will be agnostic of materials because not all of the classrooms will be piloting. For that particular piece, we have at least right now in-house, two people that can design and are designing that piece for the teachers. Those two people are Ms. Devon Kootman and Dr. Rene Marcy. So I'm naming it to be as specific as possible so you can see that this idea of providing the rest of the middle schools with coaching and specifically all the new teachers, because as of right now, we are hiring 12 new teachers in math. So those new teachers will need that specific handholding through this new process. And we have these two teams working together from content to professional learning. Now, here is one piece, it is, you are completely accurate. We have not presented that in a grid that shows. Here is the actual strategy per school of, for a number of schools. Here is the staffing that we are using for that. And here is the sequence that will take to get to that level. And I know the president liked to ask when and by when. And I can commit, as I did with the Delac piece, I can commit that we can provide you by the end of May with a scope and sequence of what those professional learning sessions will look like for teachers and for schools. Another component that I want to close up with is, it's not just building the capacity of the teachers. We also need to build the capacity of our leaders, meaning principals, assistant principals. So we have one key strategy that we are calling the ILT Instructional Leadership Team. And those will be learning about both literacy and math so that teachers can get that feedback from their principals as well, as well as from the coaches. As of right now, that's what we have. And I committed right now in public to provide you with, here is the strategy, here is the staffing connected to that strategy, here is the scoping sequence.
I know that answer, I am just curious again, maybe following similar to my colleague. What, what do we think has stopped us from doing that so far? Like what's, you know, because again, we're here, we're going, again, this isn't blaming, it's very worth to say culturally, maybe it's something the board is doing, maybe it's like, what's stopping us from having that level of strategic thinking around these goals as, as a district?
As I said before, I will take a lot of the responsibility, even though I wasn't part of that decision. I want to put that out there from the get-go. Number one, and we all know this, staffing has been a key challenge across the board. Meaning centrally, the people that we had devoted to these particular content areas, unfortunately, were deployed to the school sites. Fortunately for those students that were able to receive those teachers. But many of our content specialists in central office, we had to send them to the classroom so that they could support. So that central support wasn't there. Two, professional learning team just began this school year and has been designing this process. And so as we build a thoughtful process that has involved principals, teachers, central office people, so the design is not done to people, but with people will be able to make a difference at the site level. So I'll give you those two, there might be others, but those are the ones that are prevalent in our system and we need to address. I want to close with something that we are all aware of. Unfortunately, the way in which we have addressed the needs in math have not been consistent from central team to the site. And that's one piece that we are addressing right now. And will be, hopefully you will learn about that as we share with you what is the redesign so that we can provide that support.
These are great questions, Commissioners. I feel like I've checked about half of mine off the list, so thank you. I want to take a step back first and just thank the team that's here for the heavy lift because I feel like this is the same conversation we've been having about our English Language Arts curriculum. And there has been so much work, you know, I think Devon, we just need to put a plaque on the back of that chair and make that your chair permanently. You spend so much time in front of us, thank you for that. And of course, you too, Dr. Priestley, you know, you guys are amazing, so thank you. And one of the things that I really appreciate is, and I know this was the attempt with our current math curriculum, you know, but the intentional focus on the standards, right? I mean, like, oh my gosh, the fact that it has taken us this long to get here, wow. Thank you so much for this lift and this change. I, I, I accelerate progress, I keep coming back to that, right? Accelerating progress or stopping the decline. And I just want to thank you all for being, willing to be here to discuss this hard data. The questions, I think we all agree, this is not a reflection of hard work of anyone in our district. We all, thank you, anyone, students. Nope, there we go. Thought I reached my time limit or something. I think, yeah, I, yeah, 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 I'm getting there, I promise I'm getting there. Okay.
I'm going to have Jerry pull the mic.
Right? And then just pull, okay. I mean, I think to follow up on the questions, what I'm hearing from teachers, particularly middle school math teachers that I'm talking to, is there's a real, there's a real concern about what a heavy lift this is and how much we are trying to do at once. And, and so I want to, I appreciate the questions about lessons learned. Now, my question is more about overall resource alignment, and particularly the lesson study as we, you know, there are a bunch of us who went to Muir and saw it in action. It takes so much work from the team, you know? It's not going to be just two coaches and all of a sudden we'll implement lesson study. I mean, like, every single lesson has to be dissected, and, and, you know, it's, it's like team teaching and, I like, yeah, so like, are, what have we done to allocate the appropriate resources to do this effectively? That's really like, where's the, what is the budget it's going to take? You know, have we outlined that yet? Are we going to see that in June when we approve the budget? Are we going to see it as part of LCAP? Like, when do we see the dollars and the numbers and the staff? I know you said by end of May, but like, is there, can anyone say right now? Like, I mean, we have, we have 20% of our classrooms that don't have teachers in them. How are we actually going to get to the point where we have enough credentialed teachers and coaches to be able to pull the, that's, that's where I'm still trying to wrap my brain around the scalability of this, so, and my skepability.
Two things. One, a lesson learned about communication of data, because this number said before, we didn't fill 20% of our vacancies, not that we have 20% of our, all of our classroom teachers are, you know, unfilled. So there's, right, we had a certain number of vacancies, those we didn't fill, but those vacancies didn't represent our whole staffing. But teacher vacancies is an issue. No, actually, in May, we're coming, in our budget workshop, we're going to share the budget, I mean, it'll still be somewhat high level, but you'll actually get to see what we're doing in terms of our, the investments and our inputs. We're going to follow what we did last year in terms of, last year we shared a baseline of our expenditures, and then next week we'll be sharing where it's been increased, and this is an area where it's increased. So at least we'll get to see next week what that budget's starting to look like.
I appreciate that. And then my final ask, I will stop. Better, really struggling being answered in the, in the questions and answers documents. I, there's a lot of follow-up questions I would like to ask, because I don't think that there's enough answers to our technical and strategic, or technical and tactical questions in there. So I think my overall ask is, more data. I'd like to see more disaggregated data. The data question I have about monitoring report here is, we talk about, we only show like, the numbers of scaled scores as they, what does that actually mean? Like, what are the base scores we're starting with and improving to or decreasing to? Just, just more data overall. Love to, I think, and our community appreciates that as well.
Just following up to, I think, a theme from my colleagues, is trying to get an understanding of the strategies that we are seeing progress at individual school sites. And certainly, I appreciate about understanding the elements, but if you could all shed some light about, so for example, we're seeing progress that have been increased significantly around proficiency at particular school sites. What have we learned from those strategies? And being specific, because I think we've asked it now each board member, and yet have, I think, really tactically understood, like, frankly, like, I'm not surprised, sitting on the SSC of Roosevelt years ago, that they're at blue. So I'm curious that we've also seen increase significantly at Vis Valley, glad to see that progress. And so I think that's what we're hungry for, to understand specifically what the strategies are, in absence of, again, kind of scaling over time with this curriculum adoption. And thank you to Commissioner Wiseman Ward, asking about the.
Sure. I think one of the things that I can share specific to the curriculum adoption as a strategy is actually a cross-disciplinary component. So one of the things we highlighted, as folks may remember, when we went through the process of doing the curriculum adoption for Language Arts, is that we were concurrently running elementary and middle grades curriculum piloting. And if folks may remember, now that everybody has their progress monitoring reports out, is that one of the specific examples that we saw is at the middle school level. At the elementary level, we had folks piloting one unit of two different programs, which is a pretty significant lift for teachers to take on. There was some switching there. At the middle school with Language Arts, we actually had teachers engaged in a full year of curriculum piloting. So again, we've built on that strategy, we saw really strong outcomes, we're mirroring that with math in terms of a full year. The other thing I want to highlight is, we saw really strong gains for middle school ELA when we had full departments of teachers opt into piloting curriculum. So they were, I think, most of us educators would know, were stronger as a team when we leveraged things like common planning time and departmental planning time. So one of the things that we've really pushed hard is having, and why we highlighted, for example, Willie Brown as a bright spot, is here we have a school where the entire math department is opting in as a collective to a full year of curriculum piloting, then paired with really strong professional development. So we've looked at some of those strategic practices in ELA and mirrored them in math. One of the things I did want to highlight, just to go back to the question around piloting, is that unfortunately, contractually, we can't require piloting. However, we can really incentivize it, and I think one of the things that does incentivize it is highlighting that collaborative practice, number one. I think, number two, teachers are compensated for their work in piloting, because they give us a great deal of educator feedback to help us make a final selection decision, which I think is really imperative. Piloting is not just about using the curriculum, but also gaining some of that instructional mindset around differentiation, around deepening content standards. So I do want to just name, like, that strategy of looking at the successes in ELA and mirroring them in the design for math is one of the specific ones when it comes to curriculum adoption.
Thank you. Thank you. Could, I guess, could you just talk a little bit more about our strategy to launching pilots, and I guess, kind of, what is the approach? Seeing that we had a pilot that wasn't necessarily reflective of all of our kind of high-need communities, and it's kind of a volunteer base, so like, is our piloting strategy intentional? Is it effective? Does it give us the necessary information we need about our key focal populations that we're struggling to reach? And what is the benefit of doing small pilots versus just committing to implement the best practices in a way that is manageable for the district?
Yeah, so I can talk about two different pieces. I think one of the things we were really proud of when it came to the ELA pilot was actually the demographic and geographic diversity of those participating educators, sites, and student populations. And I think we saw that play out, both at the elementary and the middle school level, when it came to outcomes for focal populations of students. One of the things that I would say about the why, like, why would we go through the process of piloting, is I think, there's a couple different components. One is that there are some state requirements around piloting, particularly for the adoption of materials not on the state's adopted list. There's requiring, requirements such as 50% of the review committee has to be site-based educators, you have to pilot, there has to be a data collection. As we shared at the March ELA adoption, those same requirements are mirrored in board policy. But what I would say is, just sort of on a ground level, I think piloting is imperative in terms of building educator engagement. The adoption of curriculum doesn't necessarily mean that educators use it, and so part of piloting is also building systemic buy-in and shifting some of that organizational culture away from, everybody does their own thing, to how can we focus on how we teach, how we meet student needs, and how we support focal populations of students. So I would say both in terms of like, a policy requirement, but also in terms of building systemic expertise and buy-in.
Just one follow-up. Could you then explain then why with the Dreambox, we didn't have like, an equitable distribution of students represented in it? And if that is a requirement for our pilots, or is that just something we would like to see?
So I think there's a clarification. Dreambox is not the pilot, a pilot in the way that we're doing an ELA pilot to adopt curriculum or math pilot to adopt curriculum. Dreambox is a supplemental resource that we are providing to schools, so that we have an intervention or opportunities for additional practice, something that we can use, teachers can use as an additional support in their classrooms. But what we're seeing with that is, that when it is in use, that we do see some improvement. So we want to expand its use because of that. So what started as kind of a grassroots experience, because that's what Dreambox was initially, we have, over time, made it more accessible at different levels, and now in all of our K through eights. But it is not a pilot, it is a, it's a resource for our staff.
Okay, so just one more clarifying point. So then, did we have to do a pilot before we expanded it, or was that an intentional choice that we made as a district to do the pilot versus launching? Seeing that it's different than maybe some of the other things that we've done.
So, we didn't launch it as a pilot. It wasn't launched to be a pilot, per se, that's not the word that we use to describe Dreambox in terms of a supplemental resource. And so maybe there's just some clarification that's needed there.
What would you, what would you describe it as, rather than, I guess, a pilot, as far as how we used it for our data analysis and projecting what would come forward?
I think what's different, moving forward is, we want to require our classrooms, we want, because we are seeing this, we've given people options and a lot of room to make decision points about what they would like to use. And so, we brought this forward, is not in terms of adoption, becomes an expectation that you would use this in your classroom. This was offered up as a resource, and it was not a mandate, per se.
And you know, here's what's interesting, I appreciate, we've talked about these, these progress monitoring conversations being culture-building conversations, right? So I do want to say, the culture in this district, we've talked, has been very decentralized, and we've let schools both innovate and decide for themselves what has been the best, best strategy, right? And I guess we haven't, and maybe what we're saying here, because it's almost like, the message from this culture-building exercise is, no, we want a culture where it's required that certain things are done, if you think that that's what needs to be done, in order to meet the goal. And so, kind of, do what it takes to get that done, which means still paying attention to the culture, because like, we've learned from an education reform history, that if you just say, "Follow the script," that's not going to, that's not an effective reform either. So, but, but the culture, you know, I'm hearing that culture shift here, so I think you're hearing from us sometimes, maybe what sounds like hesitancy, not an unwillingness to say, like, we want to do what we need to do to improve student outcomes, but like, we're figuring out the best, you know, system of how to bring that, way to bring that forward, which is a combination of setting the expectations and requirements, but providing the support to, to make that, make that happen. So I guess I say that to say, like, what, what you're hearing evolved was more the typical way things evolved, right? Oh, we're trying some different things, here's Dreambox, you know, it's a supplemental resource, we now, you know, need to do that. Whereas like, we've, like President Mutamidi and I just had the conversation, like, if there are some strategies that we're adopting, you know, do we tell school, then you don't, like, our resource, we're done, you don't get to use other resources. But that's not something that, like, that hasn't been the culture here, right? We, we haven't said if you're, overall, like, if you're, you know, this, if you want to do that, no, no, we're, we're doing this. Or if we have, it hasn't been like, the system-wide, wide culture. So I guess I just share that reflection to say, like, there is a culture tension that's coming up in this culture-building activity, that I'm feeling at least.
Yeah, I think, in some ways, it's not the board's role to determine the culture, it's the board's role to set the goals, and we need you all to figure out what the culture needs to be to meet the goals, right? So I think, just in terms of roles. But I think another question I would say is, that one of the advantages of that decentralized culture has been, there have been incredible examples of innovation, sometimes not supported by central office, sometimes ignored by central office. So I think that's where, like, my other question that I always want to ask is the bright spots. So, and we talked last time, you had, I believe, Muir and Sanchez and Presidio here, last time we talked about math, and some data, there was good data there. I guess, I want to ask again, like, are those, you know, still bright spots, are there other bright spots? Like, what, where are you seeing it working? Where are you seeing real progress toward the goals that actually would indicate that that we could do this? Like, if we, where are you seeing data that if we would replicate it district-wide, we would then meet the goals, right? And, and then what are you doing to, to expand those things strategically? I think that's the piece also that seems missing to me, where, I mean, I see, again, elements of it, like, lesson study was a thing that was happening in Muir, that's clear, but how is that, you know, again, to your point, Superintendent, becoming not just optional, right? And again, not that everybody has to do lesson study, but if it's, if, if that's a thing that we know works, how is that becoming an expectation? Does that make sense? Does my question make sense? Basically, on real examples, not on some theory, you know, whatever, but here in San Francisco, this is working, here's the data, here's the pieces I can show you, so let's all do it, right? Not in the same exact way, but here's an element of that that we can say is working. Because if we can't do that, we're never going to meet our goals, in my opinion.
No, I think that, and you're right, and I appreciate your distinction of the roles, I guess the answer is, we're figuring out how to, you know, yeah, we're, we're in the process of figuring out how to most effectively reshape that culture, you know, recognizing it needs to have some more district-wide expectations with support, right? But, yeah, but you're right, that's what we're thinking through.
Because as I say, like, every, every teacher in San Francisco wants to have their kids learn. Every school in San Francisco, I mean, I've never met a teacher that doesn't want their kids to learn, right? Some may be better or worse at doing it, but the point is, like, if, so again, like, using the example, like, I bet if every elementary school in San Francisco could do the thing, like, probably, it's not like people would say, "Oh, I don't want to do that, I don't want my kids to learn." Maybe it does require extra work, right? Maybe it does require extra support. But again, I think that's for, at least for me, it's like, I want to see a plan to get to the place where we all want to get.
Yeah, no, so we're, okay, so I am doing a little bit of a time check right now, and we still have to vote collectively on whether we're accepting or not accepting or continuing the conversation. So in the spirit of wrapping up, I do, I do have a question, and that is, you know, there's a lot of talk about Dreambox, pilots, new curriculum. I'm, I'm going to return to my first thread of questions, and that's really instructional minutes and bell schedules. Those things, like, we're mandated, we have mandated time to educate kids as a district. There's latitude to how to apply that, there's guidelines, 250 minutes to 300 minutes on the, in core subjects, that's a guideline. Some days I wish the Department of Education was a little bit more regulatory, but I want to ask, going back to the question that I didn't feel like, got, two questions I didn't feel like got answered. Who owns, and I'll add, who owns and protects instructional minutes for our kids? Like, who's responsible? Like, and I mean literally, like, who in the district is responsible? And how is collaboration and accountability and monitoring baked into the success around how we use our instructional minutes and structure our days? Push back on a couple things, actually, Superintendent, because there is a push and pull between centralized, Initiate Wonder was a centralized initiative that's been going on now for five years. I'm not clear on the collaboration, accountability, and monitoring that's gone on, because we're, our structure of our days are very, very different, school to school, even though that that is a central process. Also advisory, that's all over the map, from what I can see looking at bell schedules, anywhere from 30 minutes to, I don't know, like, you know, 30 minutes to 130 minutes over a week, across days, across one deep dive one day. So there was an earlier response of like, oh, we need seven periods. We actually have eight periods at some of our schools, if you include advisories, so we need those, so our, you know, our, our kids that need the most help, whether it's EL or IEP, well, we've structured advisory. Well, we, we've structured advisory as a time for all students. And I'm unclear how that time is being used to actually support the students that were raised as needing the most help. That is time that's being allocated across the district and is, and that was also a central office move. So I would like to understand who owns the instructional minutes? Who owns the bell schedules? And ensuring and monitoring and collaborating with our school sites to get, to understand where it is working and why? Because, I mean, some bell schedules, anyways, where it is working and why? And, and how we iterate? Because curriculum, new curriculum or no, that is what we do each and every day. And I'm just not clear or convinced that the root cause of how we're spending time with our kids is being assessed on a regular basis.
Let me just start with the instructional minutes. We have a document that we work with that says that you have to have 57,525 minutes, right? And then how it's broken out is something that, that's true. Like, there has been variances, like, across the times, across the years of specific bell schedules. Initiate Wonder, like, so if you even went before Initiate Wonder, there was just variances in bell schedules always. And so in 2015, it was when the board had said, like, Initiate Wonder, we need a middle grades redesign, right? And in that middle grades redesign, the, the push, I mean, the ask was, please ensure that there is health. Please ensure that there, like, let's build in the electives. And this came from the board. So this came from the board. We, we had reports. And so let's move, and, and so in coming to the board, we did have progress monitoring of Initiate Wonder, how we were implementing, what we were doing. So that's the history of Initiate Wonder and why we came to this, where we are now. So for us, what I'm hearing now is we need to focus on math. If we're focusing on math and increasing like the minutes, like, there has to be, we have to take a look at, like, what are, where, where do we have to, you know, let things go? I also hear that in advisory, advisory doesn't meet every day, right? Advisory is, 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 sometimes there's one day, sometimes there's two days, sometimes there's every day. So what I'm hearing is that we need to make sure that it's consistent. And that's what we're, we're looking at bell schedules right now. It hasn't been all turned in. And we are looking to make sure that there is commonalities. We give guidance on, we have given guidance on ensuring the bell schedules, as well as master schedules, are similar. But we give like options for that. There's also a contract language where administrators work and meet with the UBC to review the different options as well.
Okay, I, I don't, I want to be clear that I am not, as a board member, suggesting how a bell schedule should be or not be. What I'm trying to understand is what the process is internally of working between lead, curriculum and instruction, and our school sites around how that's, I, I want to understand what, like, I, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, who, who owns it? And like, that's helpful history around the board. I am not suggesting that I want this board to come in and say, like, "We want this to be a seventh period", or "We want that to no longer." That is not what I'm saying, is what I'm, I'm trying to understand is an educational institution with the 57,000-plus minutes. And, and, and now we have been clear as a board that what our goals are, educational goals. But there's also Department of Education guidelines and so forth. So Superintendent, I don't know if this is a, a place that you would like to illuminate.
So I think, yeah, I mean, the background's helpful, but so the, the answer is, so every school submits 57,000 minutes. That goes to lead. Lead reviews and makes sure that... With the student attendance office?
Yes, we partner with the student.
Yeah. And so make sure that they're in compliance about offering the right number of minutes and that they're also offering that the subjects that are needed to be offered. It's, I think what we're saying though, to this point, is there hasn't been feedback or guidance. There's been guidance around what subjects to do or to include advisory, but there hasn't been feedback on guidance around the number of minutes per course that needs to be provided.
Right.
Yeah.
And to put a point on the amount, the amount of time. So 180 minutes a week is 36 minutes a day of math, 36 minutes. The Carnegie unit of, for, for schooling is bottom line 40, but up to 60 minutes. There's guidance from California CDE around how many minutes every core subject should have, but that's not regulatory. So for example, PE in K-5, or first through fifth, has to be 200 minutes every two weeks, right? And that's in the actual state law. That's in the ed code. But there's nothing in the ed code that says you have to have this amount of minutes for math in middle school, unfortunately. So I just think that, you know, over time, we need to get beyond 36 minutes, no matter what. Or I would, I would say you'd want an hour a day average for math. You'd want that to get to our goals. I don't think we're going to get to our goals otherwise. If you, I think Presidio, which is at that low mark, has students, then they're yellow, has students from feeder elementary schools that are coming in prepared in math. And that's probably why they're an outlier in that respect. But everybody else is at a red or an orange, pretty much. So I would just urge us to, to do more, even if it's more prescriptive, to get more minutes for math.
So, sorry, I just want to make a... Okay, I just want to make a comment, and then I'm going to go to Commissioner Bogus. So this conversation, like, I think, I want to be really clear, like President Mutamini said, that we are not, as a board, asking you to have a certain number of minutes of math a day. I think, like, this Commissioner Sanchez suggestion is really good, but that's not our, our job is to set a goal and not micromanage. What you're hearing, I think, is our effort to understand the plan. And there's a level of sort of maybe skepticism, I think we ought to say, on like whether the plan is actually going to meet the goal. But we should just be really clear. We are not trying to do your job and tell you that you have to have a certain number of minutes. I think what they're asking is, isn't it logical that minutes, instructional minutes, might be a leverage point? And we're trying to understand how you're thinking about that. And right now, it's not entirely clear. So I think it's happened, been reviewing into suggestions, but they shouldn't be making suggestions. So I just remind our colleagues, like, we're, it's not our job to tell them how many minutes it is. Our job is to really hold the goal and to ask these questions. And more, to come back to us with a plan. And if it's not clear yet, as, as Dr. Artywa Ford has said, maybe there's a desire to come back and we could schedule another, perhaps monitoring session on math, which we maybe didn't have scheduled. But I, I think it might be useful to put another one on the calendar, because, so that, so that we could kind of revisit some of these things.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just going to, so I, I am going to wrap this up, because I, no, you're still going to go. Don't worry. I'm not going to, like, so, but I just wanted to signal to folks that Commissioner Bogus can wrap us up. And I also want to make clear that really I was most interested in the collaboration that takes place within the district, between school sites, curriculum and instruction, and lead. That was, that more so than like landing on a particular minute number. So I just wanted, that was what my curiosity was. But, and I can see that you want to respond, and I'm going to hand this to Commissioner Bogus to, so after the response.
Thank you. So I will start with the more concrete piece. Who owns instructional minutes? Lead owns instructional minutes. Assistant superintendents approve instructional minutes. Ed. Two, what is the collaboration and how are we going to? Because we also know, this is the first year in which, under the directive of the superintendent, lead and ed services, CNI, are collaborating, really collaborating. We haven't gotten to where we need to be because of the ways in which we have been working. So right now, as you see, we are involving lead in terms of these decisions. Instructional minutes, it is a struggle that we have. And even with the difference with Initiate Wonders and any other initiative, the superintendent told us, "You have this year to figure that one out so that by next year, you do have the appropriate level of instructional minutes that the students need to achieve that goal." And we will follow the recommendation from CDE. And it is true, many people will be unhappy, but the kids will be getting the instructional minutes that they need. So this year as a base is 205 as minimum. And I assure you that we will increase to the level that needs to be increased so that the students get that. And that is not just a decision that we are making, it is a decision that all of us are making. And, and the monitoring is a shared responsibility as well. Because these people here provide content. Content alone, without the supervision and the monitoring, will not get us where we need to be. Thus, the assistant superintendents, the executive directors will be collaborating with us. And there will be specific actions that will ensure monitoring is happening. I hope I was able to answer that piece. Thank you.
Thank you for the thorough answers. This is, I guess, the question that I have, kind of based off concerns, and I guess trends that I see both in this data and historical data. So looking at African-American students and seeing the struggles they're having, looking at sites that are going above and beyond with math instructional time, still struggling to kind of educate African-Americans at rates comparatively. I'm wondering, what is the plan to ensure we don't end up with racialized tracking for our middle school algebra or other kind of advanced math courses? And kind of what steps is the district ensuring that our failure to support black students to succeed within the realm of math won't lead to us falling back to kind of our history of racial tracking, racial exclusion within these types of classes? I'm not seeing a plan of that when that was initially put forth, seeing that we're off track on our goals, which means it seems like those things are further away right now. I'm really interested, kind of what is the, the plan and strategy, if there is any beyond, kind of what exists kind of in this document, to really address that and to ensure we don't kind of fall into our historical habits of excluding black families from certain classes?
So I can share two things that we identified last time when we brought forward the algebra plan to restore algebra in the eighth grade. And then I think we're coming back with more plans so that can be incorporated in it. But one was saying that as we put, you know, one of the, one of the ways tracking happened, it was in, you know, really an opt-in. And so like, those who are interested can come in, or those who the teacher selected were ready to go to math could get to go in. We, as we're implementing this, we flipped it. Like, for the schools that have, you know, are going to do a second period of math, we told students, "You're assigned to this period unless you opt out," right? And so, because traditionally, when, like I said, the history has been when there's that opt-in, it's excluding students. Then for the readiness piece, we talked about needing to put in place more intentional support to get students ready for algebra for the eighth grade. So we were building on a bright spot of our Black Star Rising in ninth grade to have a Black Star Rising for fifth grade, fifth graders. So we're working on implementing that next year to try to get more black students on the path to readiness to be able to be opted into, to be able to like have to, you know, the only way then they could avoid algebra is they'd opt out, because we've actually prepared them for algebra.
So you're saying that the plan is to make sure that they are all prepared for algebra? And I, and I guess what indications, I guess, do we have that, that we have, I guess, an effective strategy to do that, given the fact that we're significantly off track currently on the goals that we have related to African-Americans? I know that's the intent. How to plan implement a, and we don't end up with African-American students not prepared to participate in middle school algebra? Like, is there a commitment to ensure that students who want to participate with academic supports to ensure that they can succeed and get through the class, to ensure there's representation? Is there going to be some thing, schools, where that we're picking middle schools that are diverse, reflective of all of our students and kind of all in the landscape of our changing portfolio and everything? So I guess if there's any more clarity, or I guess, I guess an indication that this is being taken into consideration and that there is, I guess, a will to amend plans based off indications that we're heading for trouble or something that'll be discriminatory?
I would like to add to that, that I would say Black Star Rising is an enrichment. It's not a plan to ensure that all of our students are ready. So I think we need to make that clarification too, like, what is the plan?
Yeah, that's what I was. That's right.
All right. That's right. Yeah, we were just noticing that the battery in the, the microphone is about to peter out. So we should wrap up the meeting. So as a reminder, well, first, can I get a motion and a second to move this meeting, this, this item forward for vote? Okay. Okay. And as a reminder, as we talked about at the beginning, we just completed our monitoring conversation. And we now choose whether to accept or not accept the report based on three questions. The first being, does reality match the vision? Two, is there growth towards the vision? And three, is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth towards the vision? So those are before us. And I think the first two is, I think we can say the answer is no to, does the reality match the vision? Is there growth toward the vision? If anybody disagrees, please say so and we can... Oh, I'm after goal monitoring on...
But the question was...
Oh.
The one that got copied here is taken out.
Oh.
It's really weird. Those are the questions.
I'm so sorry. This is an old copy. I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. Is this on, is this on my? The reason why I ask is I thought, I thought what the question was, just wanted to clarify. What I thought the question was, for the progress monitoring, is does the, I thought the question was, did we meet the goal? Did we show progress towards the goal? And then if those two answers are, if anyone, either of those two answers are yes, you know, then you accept the report. But if not, then the question is, do you see a plan that, you know, looks like there is, what's the phrasing? What's the third one?
Yeah, is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth toward the vision?
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking, I was just curious why they're, they're using the word vision, because it's actually related to the goal. So we actually have some vision for, you just heard us say, more visionary. So I just thought the question was around the goal.
But it's, the question is, does the, does the reality match the vision? Which the way of measuring that, the vision is measured by the goal. The reality is, is our data, right? So it's, it's just a big, it's like a Ben Peshawaya, I think, of asking the same thing.
You know, now, because if the vision, if the vision is, the goals, no, the vision represents the values of the community. And then the goals are how you're working towards the vision. That's why you can answer the question about the goals by asking the question about the vision. I didn't mean to make things convoluted, but it, because it makes it feel like, you say, does the vision match the reality? Like, our vision, okay, like, not our vision for like where we're trying to go, but our vision as a district of that 80% of, or 70% of, you know, students by, okay, got it.
Yeah, in this case, the vision is, well, our vision is, our SFOST students will graduate as independent thinkers with a sense of agency, who have attained academic and creative skills to lead productive lives and contribute to our community, which we adopted. And then our, our way of measuring that were the three academic goals. And the one we're looking at right now is eighth grade math, right? Which is the percentage of all eighth grade students performing math at grade level as measured by state tests will increase from 42% in October 2022 to 65% by October 2027. So what we were saying, I think what President Mutamini was saying was clearly that, you know, we're not, we've, we've just shown by the data, we're not, we haven't met that goal, right? And we also aren't making progress yet toward that goal. I say yet, because I think we will. So then the third question is, I forgot.
Just the way you were saying it.
Yeah.
Really, totally cool.
Yeah. Is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth toward the vision? And so then the following bullet points are, if the answer to all three is yes, then the board can accept the monitoring report confident the data is accurate and the superintendent is performing. Second bullet point, if the answer to only one or two of these questions is yes, the board may opt to table the matter and keep the conversation going. And lastly, if the answer to all three is no, then the board should consider voting to not accept the report. So with that, I would, I would move to vote. I think we have discussed. Okay. Yeah. I was just going to do a roll call vote. Is there something that someone else would like to put forward?
Then the roll call is to, to table or to-
No, to accept.
To accept or-
We're not going to accept, we put first two.
Okay.
No, you can accept it if you think, number, you can still accept the report if you think the answer to the third question is sufficient.
Okay.
Or suggestions not.
Okay, so I would, I would say, okay, so at this point, this, see, we're learning. Hello, world, we're learning. And this is our growth mindset on display. So, and I didn't talk through the absolute mechanics of, like, how, I was just going to do a roll call of, like, to accept, to accept the report. If someone would like to propose keeping the conversation going or have any specific things, okay.
Yeah, just have a couple of comments.
And the one thing I will specify is to keep the conversation going is if there is a specific ask for clarification that was not in the report that would help you understand, specific.
So also, just to clarify before you, so you're kind of, if we vote no, and don't, and a majority of the board does not accept the report, it, it just is a signal that we believe that the plan is not sufficient, and then we will go and have another monitoring session, when we schedule the next monitoring session, and hopefully, at that point, there'll be a better plan that is sufficient, right? So it doesn't, it's a sort of, it's more saying, we're communicating as a board, that's our, our view on that.
Thank you for that clarification. Just, I want to point out on board docs, the attachment about monitoring, where the after-goal monitoring, somehow that got wiped out, and there's just a T, right? So I, if there's any way we could take that version down and, I mean, and put the appropriate version up?
And it is correct on the previous workshop meeting. If you do go to the March meeting, you'll be able to actually see the full document there.
Right. So it's just, that's the, it's some, there was a, yeah, exactly. There was just, that whole blurb is just missing here, which is part of the confusion here. What I, in order to get to the point of approving the report, I, I think the information that we've discussed here is great, but one of the things I've heard from some of my colleagues is addressing more of the root causes, right? I think we're making some assumptions, and we don't necessarily have all of the root cause data. We've talked about curriculum, credentialed teachers, coaching, ongoing professional development, planning time. We haven't talked about class sizes, we've talked a little bit about supplemental, I mean, we've seen in previous TNTP reports the importance of high expectation for students. But we, we also haven't talked about, like, at some of these schools where we're seeing the bright spots, what resources are leading into those bright spots? I mean, we've got a name that so many of our schools have outside resources. My kids went to Miraloma, for example, and, and our teachers were able to co-plan because we had so many other teachers that we fundraised for that could do the supplemental while the, those grade-level teachers got together and planned, right? So we've got to be able to account for some of those inequities in a lot of other places, too. So I, for me, in order to get to the point of, of approving this, one, we've got to really address all of our root factors in a holistic way. But two, like, we talked about, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Aguilera Fort, Dr. Aguilera Fort, like, having the real plan, I think, the strategic plan, that's what it would take for me to get to the point of actually approving this. I just wanted to put that out there.
To clarify what, what we are voting on? So the, so what, the, the question is, so the roll call vote is, do, will, do you accept the, the monitoring report? And we'll do a roll call vote across the board. And we're doing it with this microphone, apparently. So we can start with-
Let me just say, let me just say, too, so, if you say, because we're, we're all agreed that our reality does not match our vision, and we did not make enough progress to whatever is-
Correct.
I think quantified, but whatever demonstrates progress. So really, what the vote is saying, right, is saying, if you say yes, we accept this plan, you're saying, we see enough in this plan to have confidence that there's going to be movement towards meeting those goals, because we're not meeting them now. You say no, we're not accepting that plan, you're saying, we don't have enough confidence yet, we need to see more. Now, you've all indicated some things you want to see, but it's want to be clear that, and also for all of us, because if it's no, then we know, you've given us some indications of what would, what, what would provide greater confidence, right? And so, so that's what the vote, that's what the yes or no means.
Correct. Okay. So, okay.
Why don't we start with Commissioner Bogus, and then go around this way? Does that work?
I just want to clarify, if we vote no, it's not saying that all those elements and strategies being put forward are bad. It's just not that we need to see more because of the lack of progress.
Established.
Yeah. So like, and, and maybe if I can even put it in plain terms, like, just, because Commissioner Alexander's brought it up, like, lesson study's great, we've seen it. I just want to understand more, if it's only implemented at two schools, what else are you doing that's going to make sure we make progress to the goal? So like, Dr. Hernandez has said, lesson study will be informing the coaching that happens at all schools. So what I'm imagining in our next progress monitoring report, we need to actually show how that works, more than just like, oh, it's going to inform it, right? So that, that's like, so yeah, it's not rejecting lesson study, it's actually just saying, help us understand how the implementation of it's going to play out, and why you think that will help improve the goals.
Yep.
Are we ready to vote? Roll call vote, okay. Commissioner Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Lamb?
No.
Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
No.
Thank you. Vice President Alexander?
No.
President Mutamidi?
No.
Seven noes, it fails.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so with that, I mean, not the cheeriest end to the monitoring meeting, but this is, the board is working hard to demonstrate what, to, to come together as a board and to commit to monitoring the goals, to working towards the goals, and focus on student outcomes. And, you know, I appreciate the comments earlier, and thank you, Commissioner Lamb, for, for clarifying. This is, this is really about committing to do, to, to the acceleration and to looking at the root causes and really the structural changes rather, in addition to marginal and supplemental work that needs to be done, but a really, a, a deep reorientation. And it's really, although we just voted specific to this math monitoring report, this is, this is a systemic issue that isn't just about math alone, or even literacy alone, or career in college alone. And it, it took a long time to get to this point. There's a lot of hard work to do going forward. And this, I, I do want to further emphasize, I was a little bit distracted, because I was trying to figure out why the, the questions were missing from what got posted, and I still haven't figured it out. But I, and we, I think we said this at the last monitoring session, we are committed, partnership with, we are committed, curious with, doing the work it takes and the, and the constructive feedback that needs to come along the way in order to make those changes.
Thank you all for everyone's time.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I'll share just two thoughts. One is, and I think, I don't know if you said this in the meeting, but Commissioner Alexander and I were talking about this, that's why I had the questions in mind, is that even our coach, AJ, said, question number three is not, there's not like, a precise answer like numbers one and two. So we're building, you know, our shared understanding together, and you hear our reflections as well about, like, oh, yeah, we see, you know, the questions you're asking, and, and here's what we bring forward. If, like, you know, next year's math progress monitoring report, you're asking the very same questions, then, okay, you know, we're, we're not learning then. It's not a growth, growth, uh, growth mindset. But, you know, but recognize and appreciate the space for, for those reflections. And the second, then just to end, I was going to say, is like, I mean, I've, it, it's a good question, because I, I actually have looked at other districts' monitoring reports to try to figure out, in some ways, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're figuring out together, like, yeah, there is not a set standard, and so we might end up setting the standard for, for other districts as well.
Yes, thank you. So it's this, the meeting is adjourned at 8:24. Thank you all.